Hello, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelda Los, Maryetta, Norcuk, Steve Strach, Truist, Vanderwijk, and Mayor Mas.
Here. So, Councilmember Gelda Los is out of town and is not able to be here tonight, and has asked to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse him?
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor of excusing him, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Lori Yankman from Ivanress Church for the invocation. So, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand.
Thank you, Reverend.
Last prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today recognizing that as public servants in our community, we are ultimately servants of yours. And we give you thanks for the opportunity to work in positions of leadership, positions of authority. We give you thanks for the freedoms that we have as citizens of this country, this state, this county, this city, to work toward justice, toward equity, toward the flourishing of people in our community. And we give you thanks and praise for the gifts that you have given to each one here, all of them different gifts in accordance with your will and your goodness. And so, we just pray that you would help the council members here to use those gifts to care for your world, for your creation, for the people around us. God, we pray that at this council meeting proceeds tonight, you would give guidance, you would give protection, may the decisions that are made affect people in positive ways. So, give discernment, discernment, clarity of thoughts, and may all that goes on here in this meeting tonight be pleasing in your sight. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, Pastor. Appreciate that. So, council, you have before you the agenda for tonight's evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, January 27th. You've had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion? Or? And support. Anything anybody wants to point out? Additions, corrections, anything? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from January 27th's meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. Presentation of bills. It's a little bit more of a reasonable number tonight.
Yes.
Only six digits tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's a relatively modest amount compared to the last few meetings, but I know our team's still busy getting a lot done. I'll point out just a few for you in terms of the regular check register. The first one's going to be Compass Minerals America, an invoice in the amount of just over 22,000. That's for more bulk road salt. So, not super exciting, but as you all can imagine, it's been something we've been using quite a bit of this year with the cold weather we've had. There's an invoice in the amount of $12,430 to Data Works Plus. This is for the live scan fingerprint equipment that was approved on December 9th. It's a friendly reminder, we're using some of the drug forfeiture money that we've accumulated over the last few years to pay for that. We have an invoice in the amount of $9,609.75 to Greenline Inc. This is a 50% payment for the landscaping work that's being done at the corner of Wilson and 28th Street, associated with the DDA Gateway Project. So, I believe it was the last meeting that we had the initial payment on the signage that we're working on, so some initial deposits there. Let's see what else to highlight. We've got our invoice for $15,500 to Pontifex Consulting Group. This is the final payment for the class and comp study that was presented to you all recently. As a friendly reminder, based on our agreement with them, they'll continue to be available to advise us for at least a year at no additional cost for implementation questions and so on and so forth. But in terms of our payment obligations, those are now been fulfilled. And then, lastly, just point out more of a standard one, but United Commercial Services invoice for $6,443. This is our custodial and cleaning services company, so you see that company in there regularly. Have they answered any questions about any others, but that's all I have to highlight at this time.
Great. Any questions for Griffin on your bills tonight? No? Is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $288,887.93?
Support.
Motion to support. Any final comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryetta.
Yes.
Norcuk.
Yes.
Steve Strach.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwijk.
Yes.
Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Mitch?
I'd like to go first. I'll wait. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mitch Leachman, I live at 3963 Basswood Drive, and I also serve on your Environmental Sustainability Committee, and that's actually why I want to talk to you briefly tonight. I'm handing out double-sided flyer, so two separate flyers. You may recall, a little less than 18 months ago, you all approved the ESC enrolling the city in a National Wildlife Federation program called Community Wildlife Habitat. We went about launching that effort that fall, fall of '23, just a couple of months after the approval here, and we have labeled that effort with National Wildlife called Growing a Greener Granville. So, you'll see that brand on both sides of this flyer. And I think we were pretty busy in our first full year, 2024, and we want to celebrate. We want to, you know, basically just, you know, have a good time and also encourage the public to become aware, more aware of what we've been doing. So, we're planning a little happy hour social at one of our amazing local haunts. I say amazing just because I personally, my wife and I really enjoy Adesanya. Just a couple of weeks, two weeks from Thursday, we'll be there with a happy hour, totally informal. We'll have some slides that'll be flashing around on the screens inside. And just again, want to gather around. Partners will be there. We have Friends of Buck Creek, you know, Algro, Kent Conservation District, you know, a variety of groups that have been working with us on our projects over the last year or so. So, they will, of course, all be invited. But I just want to emphasize, it's not a formal program, so literally happy hour, literally drop in, five minutes, 50 minutes, you know, whatever you can spare. Most of the team will be there and will, again, have a good time. So, the other thing that I'm sharing with you tonight, hot off the press, is our lineup of our spring speaker series. You will probably recall that we had a very robust kickoff of this last spring. We did four programs in four weeks in May. We sort of toned things down a bit, maybe recognize we had a lot of things going on. So, we've got three programs this year, monthly, starting in March. So, we've got that on the flyer, and then also sort of in advance, save the date for both our native plant sale and expo after Memorial Day. We had that event last year at the Commons, had a great, had a great success with that, so we're repeating that effort. And then a brand-new offering at the end of April, coincident with our spring recycling effort, we're going to have a little Earth Day Fair at Littlefoot Coffee Roasters, and that also is another one of my favorite haunts, as a couple of people sitting up here know very well, as I invited them to Littlefoot. So, again, just a heads up, just sharing the information. All of this will go online, right? Our Facebook page, the ESC Facebook page, all of course, share it with Marcy, share it with Teresa, and we'll get the information distributed as well. But just wanted to put it out to the public, share it with all of you, hot off the press, and looking forward to 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, JR, too, because you're on the committee as well. And thanks for the lineup. That's very handy to have. Just a question.
Yeah.
On the National Wildlife Federation Habitat certification, I know after you came in, I went and filled out the form and got my stuff. Do you, do you get notice of how many people in Granville have done that? And I know you're working toward the Silver designation right now.
Right. So, so what you're referring to is we've enrolled the city in Community Wildlife Habitat. Certification is part of why we're doing all of these activities, but also certification for the city is predicated upon having a sufficient number of properties around the city that have achieved what you have, which is official landscape certification with National Wildlife. And we will need ultimately a couple hundred properties to achieve certification of their landscape in order to get the city certified as community habitat. And yes, we do have access to the database, and we're at, I think, about 15, 16 properties right now, which doesn't sound like a lot, but we, the city started with like three when we initiated this effort. But yeah, it's going to be a little while, but it's pretty exciting, and that is, of course, the way for individual landowners to engage very directly with NWF.
Right. So, yeah, it was an easy process, so maybe just awareness of these events would be great.
Yeah, yeah. We do try to ensure we have information about that very process at all of our events, and it is on our website. I say our website. It's on the webpages for the ESC that the city has.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Last chance. Last call. Next item is the consent agenda, which is pretty short. We have a really, really interesting, good 2024 police report, which is very well worth reading, great graphics, information.
Thank you.
It's always good. Thank you. And it was nice to see pictures of the officers and names, so that was good. That was very helpful. We also have the report from the police and the treasure from January. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. City manager's report, couple, couple interesting things. Griffin?
Definitely. Thank you. Tried to keep the agenda relatively light for you all this evening. I know we've had a couple pretty busy meetings we're coming off of in January. The first item before you all this evening is a proposed commercial rehabilitation district. So, just as a little bit of background, in early 2024, the city of Granville, my understanding is the city of Granville established its first commercial rehabilitation district to support the redevelopment of one of the anchor stores at the Rivertown Crossings Mall. The Commercial Rehabilitation Act allows local units of government to abate property taxes generated from new investment for a period of up to 10 years. Included a couple fact sheets, one from the MML and one from the MEBC with a little bit more information. Again, my understanding is you're relatively familiar with the concept, and I'm happy to get into it in more detail if you all would like. This evening, what we're looking to do is have a little bit of a conversation about whether or not to create a second commercial rehab district. As many of you will remember, this was a concept that came up during the joint meeting with the DDA Board in October, the concept of really looking to promote the revitalization of the 28th Street corridor as well as the downtown. So, following that meeting, the DDA had some additional discussion about this concept. I actually presented in a little more detail on the concept of commercial rehab districts to them, I believe in December, and ultimately, the DDA Board voted to recommend the creation of a commercial rehab district that aligns with the existing DDA project boundaries. So, what's being asked this evening is that if the city council is interested in proceeding with the creation of this district, we would look for a motion to set a public hearing for March 10th to consider its establishment. Notably, that's not our next meeting, that's two meetings from now, and that's to provide ample time for the public notice requirements, particularly mailers that need to be sent out to all the property owners in the proposed district.
Great. Well, I know we had a lot of discussion about it at the DDA, and I know Teresa looks at it as another tool to attract businesses. And DDA, I think it was unanimous, everybody was pretty in favor of it, so I think it's a great idea, just another opportunity. Doesn't obligate us, right? To give it.
It doesn't. So, what's being discussed right now or brought right now is, is the concept of creating the district. I've seen a little bit of background. Again, these types of projects can be done a couple different ways. In the case of the Rivertown Crossings property that you all considered before is one way, which is you wait for a developer or a development to submit an application, and in that case, you both create the district and then subsequently consider the abatement application. Another way that they can be done is you create the district proactively and almost use that as a signal or as a way to signal to the development community that, hey, we're trying to be redevelopment-ready, we're really encouraging redevelopment, or trying to get people to take a look at reinvesting in this specific area. And then, should a project come along that wants to apply for an abatement, you would consider the abatement application at that time. The discretion is still completely in the council's hands whether or not to, whether or not to approve that abatement. So, that's a really long-winded answer for creating the district doesn't obligate you to granting any abatements. It's more of a, in my mind, a proactive step to encourage economic development in this area.
Questions for Griffin, thoughts?
It will come as no surprise. I do not support, and I hope that the DDA and Teresa will forgive me because I'm just remaining consistent in my opposition to rehabilitation districts and industrial facilities exemptions and such things, just because to me, it is government engaging in picking winners and losers and shifting burden from one group onto another. And so, I oppose these. I did when we previously did it. To me, and I know this is kind of backwards thinking from someone else, some people perceive it, but to me, once we establish the district, then it becomes more of an administrative function to me where somebody meets the requirements. I'm not going to decide who, who I want to give the break to and who I don't, so I will support all of them because I'm not going to engage in the picking of winners and losers. But this is the opportunity from my vantage point to make a legislative decision on whether or not I feel these are appropriate for government, and to me, they are not. So, I will oppose it, as I've opposed all of them, but I certainly think it's wise to do this. There's, you'd be foolish not to pursue things like this. My opposition isn't to the DDA, it isn't to the efforts to do rehabilitation, it's just to this as a concept, so I will be voting.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, too. And philosophically, we disagree, but I appreciate your, the thought that you give to us.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? So, you're looking for a motion to set a public hearing?
Yes, this evening for, for March 10th, to consider the establishment of a proposed district.
Is there such a motion? Make a motion to set a public hearing for March 10th to consider the establishment of this proposed commercial rehabilitation district?
Motion.
Motion?
Support.
And support.
I didn't know that you were making the motion.
I'm not sure I was, but.
We're good.
All right. Motion and support. All right. Any other final thoughts, comments?
Quick question. If you didn't answer it otherwise, but why is there a whole building here? Is that residential?
That, yes. So, my understanding is the DDA district, which is consistent with this carved-out area residential when it was originally created. So, we created this district to look exactly the same theoretically. I mean, a commercial, or excuse me, residential property wouldn't be eligible for this type of abatement anyway, but that's my understanding, is those are residential properties, which is why they're called carved-out.
Okay. Oh, we have the castle included, because that's what you do.
Multifamily, more than five units qualified.
Oh, those, okay.
Any other comments, questions? No? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norcuk.
No.
Steve Strach.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwijk.
Yes.
Maryetta.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the next item I have for you this evening is a summary report from the strategic planning session that you all participated in on January 6th. Again, I appreciate you all taking the time to do that. As Kent County Administrator Al Vanderburg mentioned, kind of in conclusion, something he's done in the past is really take the work that was done by the council that evening and summarize it in a pretty short, easy-to-read summary report, which is included in your packet. The rankings provided during the session, as well as those provided by Mayor Mas after the fact, have been summarized. What I was looking for this evening is if there are no changes you all would like to see to these rankings. The reason I say it that way is none of this is really set in stone. Again, this was a more of a strategic planning exercise, or exactly, a strategic planning exercise. You all obviously have the opportunity to discuss more and make any potential changes, but if there are none, really the only action we'd be looking for is for you to accept the report from that strategic planning session. It'll then use as a guidance document for staff as we continue on with the fiscal year 25, 26 budget process. The only other things we can discuss this evening about this, if you all are interested, is traditionally, I have a version of a tracking spreadsheet that I've used that I can bring back quarterly or periodically to show progress we're making on some of these goals. As Mr. Vanderburg mentions in his memo, sometimes we will take these goals and put together more detailed implementation plans to come back. Sometimes we'll keep it a little bit more broad. You know, at this point in time, I'm just appreciative of us, of us taking these steps and get it to this point, but I'm definitely, you know, interested in getting input and feedback from you all on if there's any kind of next steps you all would like to see other than using the report to guide us moving forward.
I think it'd be nice to have a quarterly kind of update, what's going on, and then we think about it, and I mean, we should be thinking about it all the time, but it'd be kind of a special item. So, Teresa, you see the number-one ranking item on there, is continue community, that's a good thing, right?
I think, I think what's exciting, and again, I'll tell you all, thank you again. You know, what was exciting for me was to see how much consensus there was in really the top, you know, let's say 10 of those items. I mean, not only are they pretty clearly the highest-ranking ones, but when you're looking at the number of people who voted for a lot of those topics, I mean, we're talking five to seven of the seven council members voting for those. Obviously, there's a lot of things our organization will always have to do. This isn't to take away from any of that, but it's really just to give us some guidance on what's kind of top of all of your mind. But I'm happy to do a tracking spreadsheet. Like I said, I have one, and we can tweak that as we go. Otherwise, you know, if there's individuals of these, we want to dive into it in more detail over the next year, happy to do that as well. Just wanted to make sure you got a chance to see this summary report, and it's something we can refer back to as we move forward.
Well, tonight, we made a little progress on one of the items. That's create a commercial rehab district in downtown.
We've been making progress on a lot of these, so it's exciting to see.
Yeah, I think the ones you cited as getting more consensus are because we've been talking about them and working on them. But I too like the quarterly revisit, so this doesn't just fall off the table, and that we continue to go back to this tool. So, thank you very much for your work.
Griffin, are you looking for like a formal acceptance of this?
If you all are happy with it in the form it is right now, a motion to accept it would be, would be great.
Is there a motion to accept this report?
I move to accept it.
Support.
Motion to support. Thoughts? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Steve Strach.
Yes.
Vanderwijk.
Yes.
Maryetta.
Yes.
Norcuk.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Anything else, Griffin?
Only other update I have for the group is just wanted to give you all a little bit of an update on a meeting that several of us participated in today with the city of Wyoming. As we discussed a little bit before in the past, they have a significant number of water system upgrades planned for the next decade or so. If my memory is right, it's something like half a billion dollars over the next 20 years, just a number that shocks me. But nevertheless, important upgrades to a system that we all rely on every day. So, got quite a few updates from them, as well as some updates on some compliance items, but just wanted to use that as a chance to kind of put back in everyone's mind that we are working with the Benzincki and Company, the consultant that you all authorized several meetings ago, to take a look at our rates for the future. So, the meeting today is primarily focused on the wholesale rate aspect, which is the cost that we get from the city of Wyoming to provide water. We're also looking internally at our local project piece and those two that add up to the retail rate that we pass along to our system customers here in the city of Granville. So, I will give you all probably the expected, but, but truth for all of us to prepare for is we are expecting some increases to be proposed this year. To what degree, we don't know yet. That's what we're going to be waiting on our consultant to look at, but just want to make sure that's kind of in the forefront of everyone's mind, so there's no surprises moving forward. And again, the reason we do this is to make sure that we're responsibly and sustainably funding the water system to make sure that our community can continue to have safe, reliable water. But it was a really interesting meeting. I always appreciate it. It's just sometimes the numbers bother my mind when we think about the costs of, you know, projects like this. But just want to make sure that's on the forefront of everyone's mind. Otherwise, I also, again, just want to call out Chief Anglom. I really appreciated the annual report for the first one. I've had the opportunity to see. I really enjoyed getting to see the various wards and accommodations members of our department get. We're very fortunate to have them, men and women, in that department. They work, they work really, really hard, and it's nice to see so many of them get recognized. But I'm happy to discuss anything else you'd like to discuss, and let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Griffin? Councilmember Comments? Josh, let's start with you tonight. Justin?
All right. I'll just quickly echo what the mayor and Griffin said about the annual police report. You know, I sometimes think my job is stressful, but I have not had to apply any tourniquets or sustaining my crack rips, like I'm wood in what I do. So, just reading through the commendations that people received, the community outreach efforts, the diversity of trainings that the department educates. that the department has engaged in, it's just all wonderful stuff. So we're very blessed to have such a committed department.
Nice work, and nice job to them.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chief. And Mitch, thanks for the schedule. It's good to plug in some of those dates. Thanks for the work.
I have nothing to add to that. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks again, Chief, for the police report. Justin, you forgot to add bites.
Oh, and two bites.
Officers are going to get bitten, so, yeah. Again, things that we don't want to incur. Thanks to your team for keeping us safe. It's a great report. That's it.
I don't have anything other than thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and appreciate your interest. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Enjoy the rest of your evening.